Morning, everyone. Welcome. We'll call this meeting to order. First order of business is the disclosure of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. Seeing none, previous minutes, was there any errors? Seeing none, mover and seconder minutes. Marks, Jones, all in favor?
Gordon McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Counselor Warden.
Yes.
9:00, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next we have presentations. We've got Strategy Corp., and I think we've got Alicia, and Chris, and Chris, and David. Who's going to lead this off?
Hi, everyone. We're just, if we could just have a few moments to let some of our other team members join in. I know Chris Boulum was having a bit of trouble connecting to the audio. I'll just send him a quick message, and we'll see if they're coming in shortly.
Disclosure of pecuniary interest.
Pardon me?
Disclosure of pecuniary interest.
No.
I'm not sure. I'll defer to the group on whether or not you want to go to a second item of business before we present while we're waiting, or if you would prefer that we just give them a few moments to join.
Well, we'd have to go into committee, hold, and then back out. So if he's going to be there momentarily, we'll just wait. If not, then we'll have to expect that.
Okay, great. I see that Chris Loretto has just joined, and I believe that Chris Boulum is also now on the line. So I think we probably should be good to go, and I will go ahead and share my screen with the presentation.
Okay, go ahead, Alicia.
Okay. Can you all see my screen?
Yeah, it's blank.
Yeah.
Yes.
There we go.
Okay, perfect. I believe Chris Loretto is also here, so I think, Chris, we can go ahead and kick things off. I'll hand it over to you. Chris, if you're on the line, you may be on mute.
Alicia, Chris is having technical problems. Me and you can kick it off, and we'll wait till he fixes his mic. Colin, so I'm just messaging him. I'm sorry about that. Obviously, the joys of doing WebEx. So what we're here to do today, Alicia, if you go to slide four, we wanted to present the outcomes of our service delivery review. So just so everyone is aware, this project began in February, and was to support your strategic plan, your 2020 to 22 strategic plan. And we obviously see those three pillars, serving Elgin, growing Elgin, and investing in Elgin. So throughout this project, what we had is two different separate work streams. The first work stream was to look at the county's internal operations. How can we make the services that the county does by itself more efficient and effective? And the second work stream was to look at existing and potentially new shared services with the county, its local municipal partners, and any regional municipalities that are in the area. For the purpose of this discussion and this report, St. Thomas was the municipality that we engaged with outside of the county to discuss potential shared services. So this is the second of two reports. The first report was a current state report where we identified all the different services. We had 10 internal services and shared service improvements. And then we identified with your help, the county council's help, 12 high-impact initiatives to improve either internal county operations or shared services within the county and its neighboring municipalities. So this summary slide on page four is just a highlight of the 12 initiatives. So we found that these 12 initiatives could have a minimum $3.7 million for annual direct savings. This would be a multi-year timeframe to actually implement. We also looked at ways to make staff more productive so they can complete their value-added work, so the work that they're best capable to do and specifically trained to do. So we found over a minimum $860,000 in annual productivity savings. We found five initiatives to improve relations between the county and the LMPs. So the benefits there are not just for the county as an organization alone, but there would be benefits, both efficiency and effectiveness benefits, for the local municipal partners. We had, to help enable many of these initiatives, we wanted the organization to grow its maturity and its capacity. So we did a comprehensive redesign of the organizational structure. So as you see in this document, the real heart of the organizational redesign was to support the remaining initiatives and help mature the organization so it can become a stronger shared service delivery organization, as well as improve internal capacity. One of the areas of concern, and obviously it's very dynamic with COVID, is that Elgin has three unique care homes. So while the focus of these initiatives, we have a long-term strategy and a short-term operational improvement, is how can we achieve savings while maintaining quality care? And the last area that we wanted to focus on is obviously, and as you've seen during the pandemic, the role of IT services have really augmented and has become more of a critical function for all services in Elgin, not just for the staff but the residents. So we looked at how could the county address its IT concerns and create a longer, more sustainable and strategic IT service to support digital transformation of the organization. Alicia, I'm on the phone to you. Unfortunately, tell me if you're on slide five?
Yes.
Okay. So the next two slides are just a summary of our current state assessment. As you have seen this report, this just provides context of why we chose these 12 initiatives and some of the context and our thinking behind, the reasons why we made choices behind some of the 12 that we dove deeper on. So what we saw is that there was a strong, from an internal operations perspective, something in the dark blue, there's strong county leadership. So we have seen that the management across the county is providing strong leadership and have a desire to transform services and really push the envelope to improve effectiveness and efficiency of delivery. But the organizational design prevents the leaders to really miss the full potential of their positions. Secondly, and I don't think this is a surprise, and it was contained in our P document, is that homes' operation strategy must be addressed. The three homes is unique to Elgin, obviously legislated to have one. The county is offsetting the quality care of these homes to approximately $5 million per year. And there's a little bit of, there's an issue of fairness that Elgin residents are not necessarily prioritized, but however, are helping to subsidize the actual operations of their homes. And the third point is that we saw unequal digital maturity of the different services. So this goes to the heart of what I was talking about before, is that a focus on technology services is needed, just to make sure that all services within the organization are going through that transformation, that digital transformation together, and there's a digital strategy for the entire organization. From a shared services perspective, what we saw is that we engaged all LMPs, and we had many conversations with. Obviously, you as county council members wear two hats, but even the CAOs to get their feedback in the historical context of shared services in Elgin. What we took from those conversations is that there is some hesitation from some LMPs to participate in future shared services due to perceived inequalities from existing shared services, and the large one is roads. So we do address that. We believe that getting out ahead of roads is a foundational change that needs to be addressed before new shared services are explored, just to build a level of trust and understanding of how shared services will be delivered equitably throughout the county. I'm going to go to the next slide, Alicia.
Yes.
And then again, to that point on IT services, one thing that we saw that was unique within the county is that IT is a shared service, but it isn't a shared service throughout the whole county with all the LMP partners. Many counties do have all their local municipal partners on board for shared services. So this is a point where we can get increased scale. Also, we'll be able to have a stronger service just because of the number of customers using one IT services. So you get more specialization, and that's incredibly important in IT as it becomes more specialized. So having that, those experts in different fields instead of just generalists because of a small staff footprint is something that would benefit not just the county but all of the local municipal partners. One easy, quick win is collaborative purchasing. So that's something that we dive deeper in. We know that the county has purchasing expertise in-house, and that's fantastic, and it's working extremely well. A lot of the LMPs are missing that expertise. In addition, because there is not someone responsible to coordinate collaborative purchasing between the LMPs, there's missed opportunities on savings. So one of our initiatives solely addresses that, and the benefits for collaborative purchasing would be for the LMPs, and the savings there have been calculated there. The fourth word here is that land division is an area that could be potentially improved. Obviously, the county has taken steps in improving this committee. I know there's new leadership from the county side, and this person has breadth of experience and is exploring that. So we've done some research and have done some consultation with the LMPs to explore ways that the land division committee could be improved. And then also, for those who would like coordinated planning services, we've even started to explore a shared service where participating municipalities could choose to share planning resources with the county. Only those participating municipalities would pay for that shared services. This is something that has been done in Frontac and is successful for the smaller communities of Frontac, which is north-central and Frontac Island. And then lastly, one piece that we heard was, from a shared service perspective, the need of the smaller LMPs, smaller by population and staff footprint, are unique, and there's more opportunity, more willingness for these LMPs to enter into different shared service agreements with the county. This includes human resources and engineering advice. That's just the synopsis of some of the findings we have. Obviously, there's a full current state report. I'm going to go to slide seven, Alicia.
Yes.
So I just want to give some context on our scope and how we thought about the initiatives. So as I talked about before, there was the two work streams, and one on improving internal county services, so either efficiency or effectiveness, with a focus on long-term care. And the second one was to recommend service improvements to existing and potentially needed shared services within and outside the county. So we identified 110 different opportunities. We chose 12, and we dove deep on those with your feedback. And the way we approach initiatives have multiple different perspectives involved. So there's obviously the cost savings, and there could be hard cost savings that actually affect the bottom line, or could be reinvested into the county's operation to improve service levels in different areas. We wanted to look at how can services be improved. So this is not just from the residents' perspective, obviously, that's an extremely important one, but internal services, how can they be improved for staff to make them more productive and to have a better workplace? The next area we looked at is implementation ease. So obviously, there's capacity and political will to move forward on some of these initiatives. So that's why we really wanted to canvass all the LMPs, especially on the shared services front, to get their perspective on what they had appetite and what they had need for potential shared services, and how can existing shared services be improved to build on that trust and build on those bridges so that the county and its local municipal partners can find better ways to collaborate. And the last point that we wanted to look at, not just the viewpoint from the county, but from a shared service perspective, what were the needs of the local municipal partner or the neighboring municipalities in entering the shared service? Is the shared service not only benefiting the county, but it's also benefiting the LMPs? So these are the things that we had in mind when we were developing these 12 initiatives. Next slide, Alicia?
Yes.
So what we did is we broke these 12 initiatives into three improvement categories, pretty self-explanatory, but the internal service and operations. So for these categories, it's how can the county improve its internal operations? Homes isn't considered one of these ones, and it's a large initiative to tackle. The second category area was LMP initiatives. So these are initiatives where LMPs of the county look at existing and needed shared service. And the last one are regional initiatives. So how can the county work with the city of St. Thomas to both increase service levels and decrease costs? Next slide, Alicia?
Yes.
So this is a summary of our benefits. Obviously, there's the dark green dollars, which are the direct savings. I want to flag the collaborative procurement, there's an asterisk there. That benefit would be for the LMPs. There's the light green, which is productivity gains per initiative. And then also, we, these initiatives will have an investment cost. It's different depending on the initiative, but we have flagged the investment cost in the gray box there. They're just kind of showing the annual investment. And the dark green savings are net savings, so they include the investment cost, and they've been calculated in that perspective. So again, $3.7 million in productivity, I mean, in dark green savings, so actual physical savings, cost avoidance, and then the productivity gains is the light green dollar, so making your staff more effective because they're doing less manual and menial tasks. I can go to the next slide, Alicia?
Yes.
So obviously, implementation is one of those bars questions, how do we do this? And where do we go from here? So we sketched out a program of reforms over a multi-year horizon, and we have categorized them in short-term, medium-term, and long-term initiatives. This will be dependent on your staff and your political priorities to determine which one should be done in which sequence and the capacity of your staff. So this is just merely a suggestion, and the point of this meeting is to accept this report. There will obviously be staff reports about each individual initiative. So again, we just wanted to create it. Really, the slide is just suggesting that we understand that these 12 initiatives are complex, and it won't be done overnight. And there are some sequencing that should be considered, especially on the shared services front. We do really recommend that the county focuses on improving existing shared services to build that trust before it explores new shared services. Next slide, Alicia. I think you actually will present.
Yes. So we're on slide 12 now, and I can take it from here. What I will do is just go through each of the initiatives and just provide the high-level summary of what we are recommending. Before I do that, as you can see on this slide, I just want to be clear on how each of the reviews that we've looked at and all of our recommendations do align with one or more of the county's strategic goals or its strategic plan. So just at a high level, within the internal services and operations, there were five reviews that we looked at. The first was the homes' long-term strategy, and we recommend that the county create a professional municipal services board and hire a CEO to manage the homes and lead transformational projects that will ultimately improve patient care and lead to some process efficiencies. The second review was the homes' short-term improvement. We recommend that the county implement process improvement opportunities and use digital tools in the homes so that staff can spend less time on paper processes and focus more on supporting patient care. The third is the organizational redesign, and as Chris mentioned, this review was really about how do we operationalize the strategic initiatives in this report and create an organizational structure that will support that. So that outlines how the county can go from year one to year five and ultimately implement these strategic initiatives and have the capacity to support that. The fourth is the improvements to the manual processes. As noted, there's a lot of opportunities to implement some digital transformation and to digitize some of the paper-based processes that the county has in the manual processes. And then fifth, and finally, with internal operations, and this goes along with the improvements to the manual processes and the work, the short-term initiatives in the homes. But we explored opportunities for Elgin to take a more regional approach to IT. But we recommend that Elgin undertake its own digital transformation strategy first in the short term to help set the foundation and facilitate a more regional approach to IT in the long term. The second set of initiatives were the LMP initiatives, and I will quickly run through these five initiatives as well. The first is creating design principles for shared services. We recommend codifying processes for designing and governing the shared services with the local municipal partners to create more predictability and foster trust among the LMPs. The second area that we explored was the roads' maintenance agreement. Similarly, we recommend a number of governance policies to improve this shared service. And additionally, we recommend that the county and the LMPs undertake an independent third-party review of the current funding arrangement. The third LMP initiative that we looked at, that was mentioned earlier, is the collaborative procurement. Through our engagement with the LMPs, we found that both the county and LMPs recognize the significant potential that collaborative procurement has to find savings, and we provide a number of ways to take the next step in enabling more joint procurement across the county. The fourth is development services. Again, through our engagement with the LMPs, we heard that they were interested in having more development services support from the county if they don't have some of those functions in-house. And we recommend a number of short-term improvements, for example, making improvements to the land division committee to support this service in becoming a shared service in the long run. And then the final LMP initiative that we looked at was HR as a shared service, and many of the LMPs do lack professional HR support in-house. And the county has historically provided some ad hoc support to the lower tiers to support HR functions, and we recommend formalizing this back office function and creating HR as a shared service. And then finally, we explored three regional initiatives. The first was economic development, and in order to better align this service with council's strategic priorities and to improve the service levels with their service, we recommend exploring an economic development corporation between the county and the city, similar to the Windsor Essex Economic Development Corporation. The second regional initiative that we explored was opportunities with the libraries. And what we found through our engagement was that the city and the county's libraries do have a great working relationship, and they collaborate on a number of areas. But we found that there could be opportunities to collaborate more on procurement in the short term to find some areas of savings. And in the long term, they can work together on the new library in St. Thomas's West Side and the Talbotville area. And then finally, as noted in the internal operations, there are opportunities to implement IT as more of a regional approach and to do collaboration between the city and the county to achieve economies of scale with IT. And through our engagement, we found that the city's IT services are a bit more advanced than the county's currently. So we recommend that the county implement its own digital strategy first, which would be able to set the foundation for more regional collaboration in the long term. And with that, we will open it up to questions. Happy to answer any questions that you all have on any of the reviews that we mentioned, what we found in the current state. I'll hand it back to you.
Okay. Thank you, Alicia, for that very intensive report. I do have one question, and this is in regard to the long-term care. I think I saw the stat that the average cost per bed was $75 in the province, and ours was $100, and we were well aware that we were having a premium service compared to some of our neighbors. Also, I think the province stated that the average was two and a half hours of care per resident, and we were at about three, and now the province is suggesting four, and they're willing to fund that. How does that change the picture on the saving on the long-term care?
Yeah, Warden, it's Chris Loretto. I don't think we fully know yet, because the province has only really announced their intention to fund the four hours a day. I certainly haven't seen any specifics on how that will roll out and how that will end up in the homes. I mean, if the province really is taking up the full freight, and David, I think the issue is always, you know, what is in that four hours of care? It could be good news for the county in terms of offsetting what you're currently investing to provide an enhanced level of care in your homes. So I think we need to wait to see the detail rolled out from the ministry on the specifics and how those dollars would roll out. David, did you add anything on that?
Yes. Mr. Warden, when I looked at the provincial budget, there was no money in the budget announcement related to this particular initiative. So the province has said it is going to increase the level of nursing care in homes over the next few years to four hours, but they haven't said how they're going to fund it and whether or not you'll be able to use that additional funding to replace the money that you're putting in, or whether you'll be expected to add it on to what you're already spending. So on that one, you're going to have to wait to see the details of the announcement for the province. The good news, though, I think, for Elgin is that what the province is recognizing is that the level of care in the homes does need, the level of professional healthcare in the homes does need to increase, and actually increase beyond what you're currently doing. So that is a positive response. But as Chris said, we need to wait for the details to see the actual impact on your bottom line.
Okay. Well, thank you, and certainly, that will change the overall picture once we know that. And we're having a meeting with the MPP tomorrow, I think it is, and certainly, that's one question I will be asking him. You can't not only announce this, you have to show that you're willing to budget it as well. Any other questions from council on the report? No questions? Okay. You folks got off easy. I thought there'd be a bunch of questions for you. So if nothing else, thank you very much for the report, and I think the next step is that we're going to recommend that we turn this over to staff, and staff do an analysis of it and bring it back at a future date, and with recommendations and a timeframe. Okay?
Mr. Warden, if I could just quickly say, we'd like to thank the staff of Elgin. Like, this was a large lift, not just from our perspective, but from their perspective, and Julie and her team showed a lot of leadership in helping us get this done. We'd like to thank your staff for working diligently on this.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. All right. Thank you, Strategy Corp., for coming in this morning, and we will be in contact later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
We need to motion our mover and seconder for the recommendation of Strategy Corp. Turn this over to staff.
And receive and file the presentation.
Receive and file as well. Move by Martin, second by Ketchba. All in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell. Counselor Purcell?
You're on mute, Bob. Still on mute. Bill says yes. That's on your head. That's good.
Counselor Mark.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Giger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Counselor Warden. Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. We need a motion to move into the committee, the whole, please. Jones, McPhail, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell. One more time, Counselor Purcell. I see.
He's nodding his head, so yes.
Sir Martin.
Yes.
Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Warden's activity report, it's been very busy. November is going to be more busy as we present this to lower tiers in City of St. Thomas and libraries and economic development. It's almost a daily meeting process. But anyway, any questions on the Warden's activity report? Need a motion, receive and file. Marks, Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
I'm just going to have a hard time asking a question.
Do you have a question, Sally?
No, I said Bob's going to have a hard time.
Eventually. Okay, let's move on to Jeff with the pre-courts report. Jeff, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to the rest of Elgin County Council. My third quarter report is in front of you for the period July to September 2020. It's a summary of bylaw related and weed inspection activity. A total of 15 applications submitted for December 30th. Summer is typically a slower period of time for harvest applications. Applications for the West Elgin, five, Done Donwich, two, Southwood, two, Central Elgin, three, Malahide, two, and Bayam, one. The total volume for harvest was approximately 440,000 board feet. And the total forested area involved in these harvests was about 380 acres. No council exemption for woodland clearings applications were received in that third quarter. I did have a few inquiries of that nature, but no applications received. Eight weed complaints were received in the third quarter. Most of those would have been late August, early September involving ragweed. People were starting to notice hay fever symptoms. One of the complaints was for a property where I received a ragweed complaint for the second consecutive year. So I really had discussed that with that landlord and hoping to reduce the chances of having another complaint received next year. So as far as industry news goes, I know this was a topic that came up at council a couple of months ago with regard to American Beech in our woodlots. American Beech is a large deciduous tree native to this area. It's very common in many woodlots in Elgin County. It, most of us would be familiar with it by its smooth gray trunk that looks a lot like a an elephant leg. It plays a very, very important role in our forest ecosystem and provides a lot of food for many species of wildlife. Unfortunately, the survival of American Beech is threatened by two bad nasty, Beech bark disease and Beech leaf disease. Both of these diseases can kill American Beech and if they don't come to the point where they can be impacted or more susceptible to other more common diseases. Beech bark disease is a two component disease called an insect fungus complex. It starts by the bark of the tree being cracked or punctured by an invasive scale insect, followed by infection of the tree through those cracks by a canker fungus. The scale is in and spreads by wind animals and human movement of the diseased beech. And the canker fungus also spreads through movement, but also by wind and rain flash of the fungal spores. It was first introduced into Canada in the 1800s and has moved across much of the range of American Beech in Quebec and Ontario. It does kill a majority of the America or the American Beech that it does infect. But those ones that do survive are often disfigured or deformed and don't serve the same function that they did prior to that. A Beech leaf disease is one that very much concerns me because it's not entirely understood by forestry pathologists. It is believed to be caused by invasive nematodes that live within the leaf and and reduce its photosynthetic activity. Leaves impacted by the Beech leaf disease have a very distinctive underside striping during the growing season. So it does impact all age classes of American Beech. The smaller trees tend to die out very quickly, whereas a lot, our large ones decline more slowly. And hopefully, we don't know yet whether it, there'll be some survivals of those larger species. It was discovered in Ohio in 2012 and and on the North Shore of Lake Erie in the Malahide area and not too long after that, a few years, a few years after that. So due to uncertainty with how it spreads, there are currently no definitive control measures in place to prevent its spread. We'll learn more about that if they learn more about it and figure out a way to prevent it from spreading. So any questions? Provided a few links on my report that you can check it out. And there'll be some images as well of what to look for for both of those diseases. So be happy to answer any questions now.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions for Jeff on his report, Sal?
Just comment, I wanted to thank you, Jeff, for the the links. I I was not familiar with the Beech leaf disease and I found that very interesting. I do know our spring water conservation area, the beaches have just virtually been wiped out. It's been devastating there. And I assume probably because we have a lot of people through there that that would help spread it faster, but I don't know.
Quite possibly.
Any other questions for Jeff on his report? Seeing none, mover and seconder for Jeff's report, please. Martin, Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Michelle, are you doing the physiotherapy?
I am, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. So before you, there's a report on the physiotherapy services for the three county homes, the contract award. The report details the request for proposal and seeks council's approval to award the contract. Under both the act and the regs, we are required to provide onsite physiotherapy services for residents on both an individualized and a group setting basis with qualified therapists. There's three attachments included in the report. The first one was the RFP, the second one was the advertised and information posted on the county's grid portal page, and the third was the evaluation committee. The evaluation committee met virtually as well as, sorry, on October 1st to discuss the proposals. And then we did presentations or received presentations by three of the four proponents. And then decisions were made on October the 15th to review the final scores and discuss references and confirm the decision. The firm selected the evaluation committee, Achieva Health, which was the highest scoring qualified proposal. And so the recommendations before you are that the contract for physiotherapies, physiotherapy services be awarded to Achieva Health for a three year term and that staff be authorized to extend the contract for an additional two year term in accordance with the procurement policy and that the warden and CEO will be authorized to sign the contract. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michelle. Questions for Michelle on the physiotherapy? Seeing none, mover and seconder for the recommendation, please. Marks. Fail, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And Michelle, you're doing the attending physician?
I am, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. So the attending physician agreement again is a requirement under the Long Term Care Home Act and regulations. The role includes being accountable to the medical director for meeting the home's policies, procedures, and protocols, for the provision of medical services as outlined in the act and the regs, and for provision of after hours coverage and on call coverage. The homes currently have agreements with five attending physicians. Having regard for the current pandemic and upon review of the act and the regs, a number of recommendations for change to the attending physician agreement were were included. And those, some of those were the pandemic measures. Just making sure collaboration with the director of the homes and following public health guidelines to ensure services continue. We did, we are looking to extend the length of the agreement from one year to two years. And this really is to support continuity of medical care. And in regard to the updates to the agreement to align with the act, the regs, and the pandemic requirements. We also clarified the insurance coverage within the agreement and clarification of local physician and student physician requirements. Also, a move towards electronic documentation, so that was captured in the recommendations for change along with restraint usage requirements. Attending physician on call after hour coverage fees are funded by the Ministry of Health and Ministry of Long Term Care and the attending physicians bill medical services to OHEP, so there's no cost to the homes. The agreements have been updated following thorough review and recommendation by both myself and by the county solicitor. And they do align with the act and the regs. Negotiations with the attending physician support the recommended changes. So the recommendations before you are that the report be received and filed and that council approve and authorize execution for, by specified representatives for a two year agreement with Dr. Derek Vaughn for provision of medical services to Bowby Villa in Elgin Manor, Dr. Michael Toth for Terrace Lodge, Dr. Ken Morrison for Elgin Manor, Dr. Edward Bootholda for Terrace Lodge, and Dr. Elgin Osak, or Dr. L C Ozaki for Terrace Lodge. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Michelle. Questions for Michelle on the physicians? None. Mover and seconder for the recommendation, please. Jones. Ketchabah, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. One more, Michelle, on the specialized physician agreement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. So this report speaks to the specialized physician agreement specific to plasticity management. So it's a neurotoxin therapy. And the duties and responsibilities within the agreement speak to being accountable to the medical director, the provision of the specialized medical services, in this case, the neurotoxin therapy, communication with family or substitute decision maker, and required documentation. The home's specialized physician agreement with the previous provider did end. And there was a component that was recommended, highly recommended by allergen. And through my discussions with that individual, I was able to confirm both interest, willingness, and expertise in the provision of these services and including the provision of services for long term care home residents. So again, having regard for the current pandemic and upon review of the act and regulations, a number of recommendations for change to the agreement are there before you, similar to the attending physician. Again, the specialized physicians bill medical services directly to OHEP, so there's no cost to the homes, only benefit benefiting those residents that aren't able to get out and go for permits to receive these services. So the recommendation before you is that the report be received and filed and that council approve and authorize execution by specified representatives of one year agreement with Dr. Adam Cassam for provision of these services to all three of our homes. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Questions for Michelle on the specialized physician agreement? Seeing none, mover and seconder for the recommendation, please. Martin. Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Nancy, you're doing the next subdivision agreement?
Yes, good morning, everyone, and through you, Mr. Warden, to council. Just a quick report on the recently approved plan of subdivision that's located in the township of Southwood. It consists of 16 single detached lots, one multi-family block, and one stormwater block. I'm available for any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Nancy. Question for Nancy on the subdivision report? Seeing none, mover and seconder for the recommendation, please. Jones, McPhail, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Who's next? Mike?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to county council. So this is the procurement activity report and it's detailing the words of contracts approved by directors by between 15,000 and 250,000. This report covers the period from July to September of this year. The list of the projects, the approved supplier and amounts is attached as appendix A. All contracts comply with the county's procurement policy and recommendations of the report were received and filed. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike on the procurement activity report? Seeing none, mover and seconder for Marks. Secondary.
Shiger.
Shiger, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Mike, you're doing the Terrace Lodge one?
I am, yep. Thank you again, Mr. Warden, through you to county council. So this report provides details on the current tender process for obtaining the sub trade bids for the redevelopment of Terrace Lodge. So this process is being managed by MMMC Architects and D. Grant Construction, who is acting as the construction manager. So the purpose of this report is just to request an exemption to the procurement policy relating to two issues that were flagged and discussed for policy compliance. The first issue is the delivery of the sub trade bids to the construction manager and not the county. The county's policy states that all bids will be accepted by the county electronically. The second issue is the inclusion of a post bid evaluation clause, which allows for the evaluation of a bidder's past performance, relevant healthcare experience, and available manpower to meet the construction schedule after the tenders close. So this clause is typically not included in county tenders. However, it is common in construction manager tender processes that were managed by both the county's architect and the construction manager. All other requirements of the policy are applicable and council through the Terrace Lodge Building Committee will be required to approve all bids submitted for this project. The tenders are currently open for bidding with a closing date of December the 1st. With that, the three recommendations are before you in the report and I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike on Terrace Lodge? Seeing none, mover and seconder for the recommendation, please.
Purcell.
Move by Purcell, secondary. Ketchabah, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Shiger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Alan, you're doing the short line report, please?
Yes, good morning, through you, Mr. Warden, to members of county council. On June 24th, 2020, CN published a notice of discontinuance of the Cougar Railway Line. This being the result of Southland Railway transferring the rail line back to CN. Now, the rail line runs from New Serum in Elgin County right through to Cortland in Norfolk County. For Elgin, this discontinuance is of concern as a portion of the line does run between New Serum to Bayam. This action by CN brought to the forefront, however, the importance that rail plays in the region's economy. To address this, to address this issue, the South Central Interior Region, or SCORE, arranged a meeting on October 8th, attended by representatives of counties, municipalities, and some businesses that are directly affected by Southland's decision not to operate the railway line. As a result of this meeting, the county's general manager of economic development attended the SCORE Economic Development Resource Group meeting that supports the SCORE Board of Directors on November the 6th. The results of that meeting will have staff doing more research and verifying information that will assist SCORE and Elgin to decide on what approach should be taken with respect to developing a possible business case to support the development of a short line rail model. SCORE will be hosting a meeting of the larger group, that's the group that's in October, on November 19th. Going forward, the general manager of economic development will keep county council updated on any short line rail discussions. And the recommendation for council this morning is to receive and file the report as information. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Questions for Al on the short line railway?
Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just, I, just a dumb question, has Karen Vecchio been read into the loop? I'm pretty sure she probably has by now. She seems to have a lot of clout at the federal level with this type of stuff.
I would think so, but Al, you got a comment?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Jones. It is my understanding that SCORE have reached out. It is my understanding that SCORE have reached out, I believe. I can verify that, but I think they have.
Any other questions for Alan?
Mr. Warden, I can make a comment about?
Go ahead, Mary.
I've had meetings with Karen Vecchio about this issue a couple of times, actually, so she's very well aware of what's going on.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Any other questions, comments? Mover and second over the recommendation, then. Ketchba? Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Shiger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Brian, what are you doing?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to county council. This report recommends to council that the library enter into a partnership with the Ministry of the Solicitor General for the donation of discarded library materials. We were approached by the ministry about the possibility of acquiring our discards for use in prison libraries in the ministry's western region, which comprises five detention centers, including the Elgin Middlesex Detention Center. We have reviewed the proposal and feel it meets all the operational criteria laid out in the report. Sustainable methods of discarding library materials is a common challenge within public libraries. This proposal not only establishes a meaningful partnership that will have a positive impact on the prison population, but it will also have clear environmental benefits by reducing the amount of materials that go to recycle, or in many cases, to landfill. While some libraries have made similar arrangements, this is the first we are aware of that benefits the ministry's entire western region, and is this comprehensive in scope, so if approved, this will be a significant partnership. And if I could, I just would like to tell you how this partnership came to be. Kelly Jerome, who was listed in the report as the ministry's librarian, was on our staff at the Dutton branch prior to joining the ministry and subsequently approached us about this partnership. So in this regard, I'd like to thank our supervisor at that branch, Courtney Kennedy, for helping to foster this proposal, as well as Natalie Marlowe for reviewing the operational considerations. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Thank you for that report, Brian. I suppose that's good news for any politicians that are misbehaving and will have some books to read in the future. Any questions for Brian?
Just a comment, I think it's an excellent program. I'm very happy to see. Maybe Dave will enjoy his books.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, need a mover and second with a recommendation? McPhail, Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Shiger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Brian, you're doing the next one on Victoria Street?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to county council. As directed by council, the municipality of Bayham is requesting the establishment of another community safety zone fronting fifty-nine Victoria Street on County Road Fifty, within the community of Port Burwell, and further that the posted speed limit be reduced from fifty kilometers per hour to forty within that established zone. Based on past practice and support of such additional requests, staff recommends that the new forty-hour kilometer speed zone and community safety zone be established annually with respect to the community safety zone from September first to June thirtieth, from the south property limit of Plank Road to a hundred and fifty meters in advance of the school property frontage, as shown on the attached map. Accordingly, bylaws seventeen eleven being a bylaw to authorize speed limits, and bylaw seventeen dash twelve being a bylaw to designate community safety zones will need to be amended. The recommendations are before you. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian on this one?
Mr. Warden, it's about Purcell.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yes. Just, just your opinion on why we would do it annually for a short period of time as opposed to just doing it? Period.
Through you, Mr. Warden, it's consistent with current language within our bylaws. That's a decision of council, and it's just a consistency of past practice.
Like, I guess the question, Brian, is that rather than do this every year, can we change the policy so that we don't have to do that? I mean?
Yep, we absolutely could. Again, the establishment, the forty-hour kilometer per hour speed limit would apply, as indicated in the report during the school year. And then would refer back to the fifty during the summer months, but again, staff would be happy to implement and can support the recommendation that it remain forty all year long.
Any issues with that?
No, it's interesting, to you, Mr. Warden, are all the community safety zones so across the county?
Upon my review of the documentation and bylaw, yes, that is correct.
I didn't know that.
We'd be happy to bring back another report if council wishes in that regard.
Alan?
That had been my understanding as well, Brian, when we first put them in, but nobody living in the area, I know I drive by the Sparta one, there are no signs saying it only applies during school hours or school week or whatever, because I've had people complain that people are going faster in the summer, but I said, well, my understanding was originally you could go fifty in the summer, but there are no signs, so a lot of people are confused about it. Should we be signing, just adding during the school year or something? Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden, there absolutely should be a tab sign indicating the period with which that community safety zone period applies. So yes, we will review that if required.
Alan?
I'm just thinking here out loud, but I drive by locked school on my way home continually, it seems, but I believe they have flashing lights when the school, so it's not all the time. I don't want to put flashing lights around for everyone, but that's what they do. The flashing lights are on, it's enforced, I think that's the way it goes.
That's a lot more expensive.
Yes, but it's, it is confusing, I guess.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I think what we'll deal is turn that back to Brian to have a examine this and look at all the safety zones and then come back with a recommendation in a future meeting?
Well, Mr. Warden, not to belabor the point, and I agree, it's an interesting proposal to go back and talk about whether additional signage is needed at our current safety zones. In order to just move this along, it'll be consistent with the rest. We could adopt this today, and if we need to make additions or change the policy, it'll just be inclusive with the rest.
Yes.
So if that's the case, I'll move the recommendation.
Okay. Is everybody happy with that?
Mr. Warden, it's Bob again.
Go ahead, Bob.
Since I started this conversation, I was happy to second with Mr. Ketchba, but on the condition that Brian go back and make a recommendation about making it permanent full-time for all the school zones. I think times have changed a lot, and our school yards and facilities and that are used year-round, even if it's just for recreational reasons. And I agree, like, I know ours in Dutton, we don't know it's forty for any part of the year. So as long as we're going to go back and revisit that part of it, I'm happy to second this motion.
Thank you, Bob. So?
Mr. Warden? Mr. Warden, if I can comment on that, I would like to, as part of the review of that component, I would like to make sure we consult with the schools, because I too believe there are a lot of schools that have summer programming that may not be happy to know that we're going to for specific months. So I would like input from the schools.
I think, I'm sure Brian can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so a move by Ketchba, second by Purcell, all those in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes, and at that time, I didn't push the button.
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Shiger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And Brian, you're doing the east road?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to council. Once again, at the request of the municipality of Central Elgin Council to reduce the speed limit along East Road to fifty kilometers per hour was received. Currently, East Road has three distinct speed limits, as shown on the attached map, that have been established based on the adjacent development density and road geometry. Staff deployed traffic counters to gauge driver behaviors and reviewed the adjacent development density and collision history. The review concluded that the existing posted speed limits are still appropriate for the current conditions. However, staff anticipates that in the near future, with additional development of adjacent lands, once that is established, a reevaluation of speed zones along East Road may warrant further review, and if required, can be adjusted to better suit conditions at that time. Once again, this technical evaluation maintains that the existing speed limits are appropriate for the current conditions. The recommendations are before you. Be happy to answer any questions.
I got Tom, and then Sally.
I have to disagree with this. I urge every council to go to the map. I went down a couple of days ago, and if you haven't been down on East Road lately, go back famous schoolhouse hill, start there and head north. The red part, you're coming up a grade, and it's, it's speed limit is a curve. Up a steep path to extended care, you go by the new subdivision over there, and it goes up, but the part that, you go to the water tower in the blue, look where you go, and that sharp turn right at the end. That curve, there's a sign there that says thirty kilometers for, and then you go to a stop. Imagine if you're in a foggy day. I just, no. And the one day to go out and put the speed limits out there, it's just like saying most days, you know, remember it's time this miserable rainy crappy weather, but look at it out here the last few days, that one day is not representative, so. And if you haven't driven that road, it's just wall-to-wall houses and subdivisions. It's not there completed yet, it's going to be there, and the construction traffic is crazy, and we're building a new fire hall at the end, so I just, like, let's do it. It's continually, continually getting calls from residents about this. I know the mayor agrees with me a hundred percent, so I'll take it from here, huh?
Yeah, and the one thing that I wanted to note, and I know Brian noted construction, but I did look up some statistics, just so you know, that there have been, in Little Creek, there have been a hundred and forty-one houses since this speed limit went in. In Sunset Bluffs, there's another hundred and ten houses have been added, and those are all fully built. In Landings, there's going to be three hundred and forty-four new housing units going in, and they'll be completed by spring. Wallstill have now bought the section, and up on the blue section, and there's got seventy homes proposed that hasn't gone through plan of subdivision yet, but that will be coming shortly, and they've already been consulting on that, and as Tom said, the fire hall on the corner, and the speed limit going down to thirty already. Within a year or so, you're going to have to change this, because it's going to be completely full. The map doesn't show that. To me, it would just make sense to do it now, but certainly the green part is fully built up with a huge number of homes now, and all along the road, because Sunset Bluffs all along the East Road as well as back in the subdivision. So I personally think I would change it off to fifty right now, as we recommend it. The other thought would be you could make it fifty up to Dexter Line, and then make it sixty up till the thirty corner at this time, until the others are built. But to me, because they're going to be built, and then within the next two years, you're going to see that whole area full, I would think it would be logical to change it now. As Tom said, we get constant complaints about people speeding through there. They just get to that beyond the fifty, and they take them. They don't. And we also have a huge number more school buses stopping in there and exiting off Hill Street because of all the new subdivision development.
Alan?
We've got a tremendous amount of walkers, and we have a park there that's heavily used. For example, on Halloween night, my brother-in-law, sister-in-law, they had a hundred and twenty kids at their door. You know, so it's, we think of poor Stanley as a retirement community, but there were a hundred and twenty kids at their door.
One other thought had been, and I know this has been discussed, was the idea of a roundabout eventually going in at where Dexter Line meets East Road, and there will be a new entrance. The Sunset Bluffs do not have a separate entrance yet, but the Wallstill one will have a new entrance onto East Road. So I mean, a roundabout would help slow traffic as well, but I know that's in the future. And that's a concern we have too, I have, because at the moment, we have no economic development charges or development charges for the county to help pay for a roundabout. So all citizens of the whole of Elgin County would have to pay for that roundabout or whatever, but I do know that has been contemplated. Brian could probably speak to that, but I would just urge to do this now if we could.
Okay, any other questions on Brian's report?
Yes, Mr. Warden, it's Bob again.
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay, I believe Brian has given us a straightforward, honest report, as he pointed out, it's a technical report. Yes, and tell us the truth on how the regulations, et cetera, apply. But then the responsibility is council's responsibility to not override that, but to instruct something different for whatever reasons. And when I hear the mayor and the deputy mayor of a municipality that passionate about something, and I know the road myself too, this is one of those rare instances where it makes sense to just do it now. Brian even alluded to the fact that in the near future, we might make the numbers all work and that, so in fairness, Brian's done exactly what he's supposed to do, and we should rarely question that. But in this case, I'd be happy to move an amendment to his report that we accept his report, and in spite of that, we make the speed limit fifty for the entire stretch.
Thank you, Bob. I'm getting nods of concern that this is probably the correct way to go, so. Any other questions, certainly on Bob's amendment? I think it makes positive sense. Okay, so we do have amendment to Brian's report that it be fifty throughout the entire East Road. Moved by Purcell, seconded by Martin, all those in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Shiger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we'll move on to Julie, you're doing the next one on Swift?
Through you to members of council. Swift Network has requested that Elgin County Council either reappoint the current Swift member representative to the Swift Board or nominate a new member for consideration as a Western Ontario Wardens Caucus Member Rep on the board. So the recommendation is that unless any other council member is interested in participating as Elgin County's rep on Southwestern Integrated Fiber Technology Board of Directors, it is recommended that Elgin County Council endorse Tom Marks for reappointment to the twenty-twenty-one Swift Board of Directors for a two-year term ending at the twenty-twenty-three AGM.
Thank you, Julie. Tom, I guess the question is, are you willing to stay on the board for another two years?
I am.
Okay. So?
And that's what I was just going to say, to me, it makes perfect sense to reappoint Tom, because he is Chair of the Connectivity Committee, and so I think that makes absolute sense. The only other person would have been Dominique Shiger, who's the other member of that committee, but to me, it makes sense unless Dominique gives us strong opinions. So I would say I'd be in total agreement with this.
Okay, and I asked Dominique if she was interested, and she said she's happy to be the vice chair of the Connectivity Committee, so. Tom, if you're willing, the recommendation is to appoint Tom Marks to another two years. Are you moving that, or are you?
Over the report.
Okay, moved by McPhail, secondary by Jones, all those in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor French?
Yes.
Counselor Shiger?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And Julie, you're doing the strategic plan?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. Considering the unusual year that we've had due to the pandemic, the county has made significant strides in achieving several priorities identified by council in its strategic plan. The report details staff actions and plans that support council's actions and strategic priorities. And we plan to present the staff action plan along with council's action plan on a quarterly basis commencing in twenty-twenty-one. Staff continue to focus on your priorities, and in the midst of the COVID pandemic, I believe the team at the county has done a remarkable job advancing a number of key priorities, and the details of which are included in red in your report. With that, the recommendation is With that, the recommendation is to receive and file this report and I would be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Julie. Question for Julie on the strategic plan? Tom?
I would just like to commend them on the amount they have accomplished. I very much appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Mover and second over the recommendation then, Martin? Ketchba, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French? Councillor Gaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. And Julie, you're doing emergency team planning?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Each month we provide you with an updated operational response to COVID nineteen. The report is self-explanatory and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question for Julie on this one. Mover and second for the recommendation then, Marks, Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Gaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we have correspondence. We have four items on correspondence. Anyone wish to make comment? Or question? See no burning issues, motion to receive and file one through five, please. Jones?
Gaguerre, I'll second.
Second by Gaguerre, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French? Councillor Gaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Items for consideration, any? Items for the consent agenda? Statement inquiry by members? Notice of motion? We do have one item under matters of urgency, Michelle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Before you is a report to council on the Homes Medical Director Agreements. The medical director agreement, same as the other attending physician, especially position requirement out of the Act and the regs. The medical director role is more of an advisory role versus a clinical or direct patient care role. I've outlined some of the requirements with that piece. Currently, we have two individuals fulfilling the role of medical director at our three homes. Again, regards to the current pandemic and upon review of the Act and the regs, there's a number of recommendations for change there. Financial implications, the medical director fees are funded by the Ministry of Health, the Ministry of Long Term Care and although there were no monetary changes to the benefits within the medical director agreements, it is important to note that as a result of the current pandemic, there is an industry trend towards a potential for exclusion of medical directors from insurance coverage and/or a potential for a significant price increase for medical director insurance. The agreements have been updated following review and recommendation by myself and the county solicitor and negotiations with the current medical directors support recommended changes. The recommendations before you are that the report be received and filed and that council approve and authorize execution by specified representatives for the two-year agreement for Dr. Derek Bond for the provision of medical director services to Bowyer Villa and Elgin Manor and Dr. Michael Toth for the provision of medical director services to Terrace Lodge. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michelle. Julie?
Just as a matter of procedure, we need a two-thirds majority vote to consider this item before we consider the recommendations. So two votes on this.
Okay. Any questions for Michelle on this? Okay, so we need a, if you got a, something in writing there, Julie?
Dissect council consent to receiving the report in regard to the medical directors for Elgin's three homes. That's the first vote.
Okay. Martin, second by Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Gaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
And your second motion?
That council approve and authorize execution by the specified representatives, the two, two-year agreement, the two, two-year agreement are, sorry, one more time, council approve and authorize the specified representatives, the two-year agreement from October twenty-sixth to October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, with Dr. Derek Bond for the provision of medical director services to Bowyer Villa and Elgin Manor and with Dr. Michael Toth for the provision of medical director services to Terrace Lodge.
Okay. Questions for Julie on the second one? Mover and second over the recommendation? McPhail, Marks, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Gaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Thank you. Yes.
Nine zero.
Got ahead of myself. Thank you, Julie. Anything else under other business before we move into closed? Okay, I need a mover and second for the following. That General Manager of Economic Development Municipal Act Section two thirty-nine dash two K, a position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiation carried on or to be carried on on behalf of the municipality or local boards, Ford St. Thomas Assembly Plant. Number two, Chief Administrative Officer Municipal Act Section two thirty-nine two K, position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by, on behalf of the municipality or local boards, Metab EMS, Elgin, Ontario, MEM SEO, contract renewal. Number three, Chief Administrative Officer Municipal Act Section two thirty-nine dash two K, position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or be carried on on behalf of the municipality, local board, Elgin nine one one, P P P S A P. And number four, Chief Administrative Officer Municipal Act two thirty-nine two B Personnel Matter about an identified individual, including municipal or local board employee, B Labor Relations or Employee Negotiations, H R upper update verbal. So I need a mover and second to go into closed. Jones? Nobody wants to go on the close? Secondary? Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Gaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. We'll have a little five-minute break and then we'll come back and begin the closed session.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion, rise and report is carried.
Thank you. Close session, item number one.
Be it resolved that the report from the General Manager of Economic Development be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and secondary, please. Jones, Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Gaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Item number two.
It resolved that the report from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and secondary? Fail, Marks, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Gaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Item number three.
It resolved that the report from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and secondary? Jones? Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Gaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
And item number four.
It resolved that the Chief Administrative Officer proceed as directed.
Mover and secondary? Ketchba, Marks?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Gaguerre?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Okay, bylaws?
Motion to adopt.
Oh, sorry. Motion to adopt the recommendations in Quiddity the Hole? Jones? Martin, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.